Twenty-four to order at seven P. M. And we'll start out with roll call.
Steve Haken in Lake Enchantment.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, Wyndham Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Eric Fowler, Staff Planner.
Roger Zappa, Township Attorney.
Move over to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes from the previous meeting of August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the previous meetings minutes.
Second.
Question? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And little side note, Denny Ferraro is excused from the meeting tonight. All right, this is time for public comment. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak may do so now.
Good evening, Brian Kramer, one fifteen here on Woods. I know the extension for the P. U. D. is up for discussion tonight. I just have a couple of comments and thoughts there. I'd ask that you not extend the request for the plan unit development by Longyear. The rationale is unforeseen or, excuse me, unforeseen difficulties. I think it's been pretty apparent. I know you guys have heard from me and others that the traffic concerns are real. In September of twenty twenty-two, the Marquette Township Board specifically did not advance the County Road Commission to pursue funding for an alternative entry into the Forestville area. At that time, I think it would have been pretty obvious that, you know, Longyear should have known that they would have their hands full trying to figure out how to put two hundred and forty homes back there without an alternative. I don't think it's unforeseen. It should have been pretty foreseeable. Longyear's been aware of the traffic. They attended that meeting where the township did not support advancing or seeking funds. I think Longyear's lawyers have even suggested they have the means, including land available, to seek secondary access into the Forestville area. The heart of the issue, you've heard it from me before, is the safety and the welfare of the community, and it's the traffic at that intersection, right? I've witnessed Mr. Marx, he's not here, but gosh, I think it was two months ago, he was making a left crossing traffic. He was this close. He was this close to getting crushed. Like, it is, it is that bad. I myself will have a teen driver in two months, and that makes me nervous, right? I am not against the development, I promise you. I just, I promise you. I know you guys don't control the traffic. I get that, but you do and are responsible for the ordinances, and critical to that P. U. D. is the safety and the traffic. I know we've talked about that before. I won't dwell. First, address the safety of the intersection and then do the development. That's, that's all. That's, that's all I'm asking here, and I know there's the lawsuit and pending, but intersection first, then the development. Thank you.
Your next question is speaking.
Hi, my name's Betsy Little. I live on Eagles Nest Road. My husband and I have been very concerned about blight. On our trip into town, we see at least five properties that are blighted, one that's absolutely disgusting. I was really happy to see in the township questionnaire questions about blight and how important or not important we thought it was. And I do think it's really important, and I do hope there's something that can be done to improve the look of Marquette Township. Thank you.
Any other question to speak? All right, we'll close the public comment and do six, A, new business, Longyear Realty Corporations, Forestville Community Phase One A. Final Plan Unit Development Extension Request. Eric.
So, in your packet tonight is a staff report and a letter from Longyear requesting an extension on their previously approved final P. U. D. plan. That final approval was granted on October twenty-five of twenty twenty-three, and the zoning ordinance does call for an extension request needs to be submitted no later than one year after the original approval date. They are requesting it due to unforeseen circumstances due to the ongoing legal situation. It's, the case is in Circuit Court. Really no other information at this point on it, simply that the request is before you tonight for your consideration.
Roger, do you have anything further to add at this point?
Not really. This is a fairly standard, straightforward thing that comes up periodically in any type of a development when the Planning Commission is authorized to create an extension, to grant an extension under the ordinance. This is not an unusual request.
Is there any insight for Circuit Court hearing with this?
We will know more in about a week. We have a hearing coming up in about a week. We'll, we'll have more information at that point. Right now, we of course have two fairly fresh Circuit Judges who got, and one of whom had some significant health issues, so the docket got a little behind. And we'll have an update on all of that, like I say, within approximately a week.
Is there, can you, can you, can we grant another extension after this one-year extension for this?
No, zoning ordinance asks for one extension.
After that, then you have to kind of start from scratch, so to speak, all over again, okay? And will this Circuit Court determination be appealable to another court?
But, well, by leave, which means the party who's not happy with the result can ask the Michigan Court of Appeals for permission to appeal. The appeal from the Zoning Board of Appeals to the Circuit Court is what's called an appeal by right, and that's essentially an automatic right to claim an appeal. Whereas moving up the ladder to the Court of Appeals in a case of this nature requires permission from the Court of Appeals in order to pursue an appeal further. And there are various grounds that have to be met, which would demonstrate that the court committed some type of error. So it's not, it's more than just establishing that either party just doesn't like the outcome. There has to be a basis from a legal perspective that is met in order to even file an application for leave to appeal, and then it's within the discretion of the Court of Appeals, whether to grant or deny that type of an application.
And if, if you were able to appeal, what court would it go to after that, then?
To the Michigan Court of Appeals would be the next one after, because it's currently in Circuit Court, Marquette County Circuit Court.
Do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, you know, what is the litigation, what is the basis of the litigation right now? Is it the Planning Commission decision, or has it moved beyond that?
It is not the Planning Commission decision. This is an appeal of what the Zoning Board of Appeals decided at its January twenty-five, I believe, twenty twenty-four meeting. And all that was decided by the Zoning Board of Appeals is that the Zoning Board of Appeals did not have jurisdiction under Article thirteen of the zoning ordinance to decide P. U. D. decisions. So the, the Zoning Board of Appeals looked at the ordinance, looked at applicable law, determined it's not an option. They can't decide that. Whether they agree with what the Planning Commission did or didn't do in October, that's the first basis. The second basis is even if the Z. B. A. had jurisdiction, or authority in other words, to hear an appeal of a P. U. D. decision, the appeal was not filed in a timely fashion.
So, so what is the ongoing litigation looking for now, then?
Basically, an appeal, a redetermination by the Circuit Court on whether or not the Z. B. A. correctly reached those determinations at its January meeting. A, could the Z. B. A. actually hear an appeal of this nature? Because it is an appeal of a planned unit development project. And secondly, whether or not, even if they could, whether it was timely. That's what this appeal is restricted to essentially.
And the Z. B. A.'s decision, lack of ability to do decision, that's not based on any township ordinance? Is that, is that a state statute?
Um, it's actually both. It's primarily, the state statute, the Zoning Enabling Act, has a provision that says a Z. B. A. in any municipality can only hear P. U. D. decisions if the zoning ordinance expressly so authorizes it. So it's not just a silence on the issue. If the ordinance is silent, then they automatically cannot hear P. U. D. decisions. Article thirteen of Marquette Township's zoning ordinance contains provision indicating that P. U. D., P. U. D. decisions are not to be decided by the Z. B. A., which is a very common provision in most zoning ordinances across the state of Michigan. It's a rare or an exceptional zoning ordinance that authorizes a Z. B. A. to hear P. U. D. appeals.
And so this ongoing litigation, has that prevented the developer from doing anything on that site, doing any development work? Is that why they're asking for an extension? Because they, they've been?
Well, the, the appellant could have applied for a stay, but didn't. But in, in prudence, and I, I don't mean to speak for Longyear.
Sure, sure.
But it would be kind of imprudent for them to proceed and excavate while this issue is undetermined, is undecided, because they could have improvements made that, at least in theory, the Circuit Court could reverse the Z. B. A., and the outcome could wind up being differently. So that's a long attorney answer perhaps to a short, simple question. But yes, that's, I'm sure what's underlying the request is that it would not be provident to move forward with developing until this is finally decided.
Can our decision tonight be appealed to the B. Z. A.? Just like the first one was?
I'd have to look at that. That's, that's not something I had contemplated. I would have to look at that. Well, I guess the short answer is, is if you were to deny the motion, the request, then Longyear would presumably have the right to appeal that. And there are more, there are some more nuances that I don't want to go further than that to state as far as where that appeal would go and timelines, and whether anybody else would have such a right, because there are a lot of cases that talk about standing and aggrieved parties also, and that gets a little complex. But the short answer is yes, there's at least the theoretical possibility that that could be appealed if this motion were to be, or request were to be denied.
Other questions?
Eric, is this part of the final P. U. D. just for that Phase One A, which was the thirteen homes? It wasn't the two hundred and forty, it was like the thirteen?
Should have made that clear in my, in my preamble, but yes, Phase One A.
I don't mean to keep interrupting, but it was actually sixteen homes is what it was limited to.
So just so we're really clear, we are looking at approving an extension for sixteen residences.
For Phase One?
Not this two hundred and twenty that keeps getting thrown around, correct? Sixteen. Okay. So, so my, so that would be that. Then I have some questions later about this dangerous intersection. But that's not part of this, correct?
You have a comment about them, you can.
Well, no, I just don't know where we get that word dangerous from. What's this, where's the information, the data that backs up dangerous?
I don't know that there is any, must the county have that whole commission? Or is it the state that does that? Do you have any idea, Eric?
Okay, so, so maybe that's, although that probably won't change my opinion on this because we're talking about sixteen units. There could be sixteen new houses built on that road, and no one would be coming to the Planning Commission to build sixteen houses, right?
Depending on?
I buy, I buy a lot, and so do fifteen other people, and I get, I build sixteen houses.
Right, but say you proposed to build a duplex on a lot back there, that would require Planning Commission approval. So depending on the type of residence, maybe, but on its face, if somebody buying a lot and wants to build a home back there, then no, they wouldn't have come to look.
Right, so that would just be approved. Correct, and, and we don't know how many potential lots are first, potentially could be for sale. All right, so that just makes sense to me.
So I'm sorry, I probably shouldn't say anything.
Do you need to come to the microphone? And I don't know if you can or not. You have to ask, not me.
So when I say dangerous, there's public information out there that will validate that. The intersection, the County Road Commission has stated it's one of the most dangerous intersections in the county. You can go look. But when you say sixteen homes, here's my ask, go bigger picture for a second. It's the, it's the construction and the contractors driving down that road. It's not just sixteen homes. It's not just thirty-two more cars. Think about what's happened on that intersection. There's how many new buildings on the corner? Do you drive it every day? If you don't drive it every day, how do you know? Look at miles driven. All that data is public information on M. Dot. I don't have access to it. You guys might have access to it. The data's out there. It's out there. I understand you're just saying sixteen homes. Just fix the intersection first. That's all. Fix the intersection. Thank you, sorry.
When you say that, I'm just curious as to if, if there was a plan to fix that intersection to what you think makes it not dangerous anymore with the lawsuit be dropped?
It's not my lawsuit, but I think when you think about the township master plan, there's a second egress there. If you, and if, maybe talk to a few of the County Road folks, what are, what are the options? Like, you've, you've seen the options. There's the Boulevard option, which, you know, inversely takes someone's property, right? The, there was the back way up the power lines, which also takes some people's property. There's the back way through five fifty to get to those homes, which I think the Blue Heron folks would be upset about. There's the dead end just before the power lines or the cul-de-sac option. I don't, I don't know what the right options are, but just, you start with sixteen homes, sixteen's gonna be two forty. Like, it's, it's, it's just gonna turn into two forty. You have, you have to see that, like, whether it's two years, ten years, twenty years. Like, the development will happen. I'm not saying no to the development, but I am saying help either prevent a tragic accident that is going to happen there. I feel like Mr. Marx was that close, and he had no idea. Like, I promise you. I see that all the time, pulling out of there five P. M., seven A. M. It happens all the time, whether people are getting hit or not. I don't have a great answer for you, but could the lawsuit drop? If, if the intersection's figured out and it's equitable and fair to everybody, I think so, I think so. But this is about, was this foreseeable? I think it was foreseeable. I don't want to be here. I'm not against the development. Like I said, I've got a sixteen-year-old daughter who's gonna be driving there. It's the hardest thing as a new driver to judge how fast the cars are coming at you. Folks who have twenty years' experience struggle with that. When you start to look at vehicle fatalities, like, they're on the rise. Like, it's totally on the rise. High rate of speed, distracted driving, the cell phones aren't going anywhere. Like, it's, it's real. I'm telling you, it's real. I'm just asking, let's think about the traffic first. You won't hear from me if we figure out the intersection, because the development's gonna happen someday. I know it's gonna happen someday. I'm not, no development. Safety, public welfare, traffic, which I know you guys don't control the road, so I'll stop. I appreciate it.
Well, I, I think the problem is that it's already a dangerous intersection, whether there's development there or not. And in order to get that intersection fixed, or plans to get it fixed, you know, if there's more things on the drawing board, they're gonna be less reluctant to fix that intersection if there's something going on versus even with the way that it is, if there's any development. So I think this, the development would actually lead to intersection getting fixed, and then trying to find the money somehow where something would happen. So I, and, you know, it's, it's hard for us because there definitely is a housing shortage in this area, and it affects everybody. And, you know, with that many units, it could really help out this area and a lot of the other people to hopefully get more affordable housing. Any other comments on, on the other part?
I'll, I'll make the motion. I truly believe in my heart that we need to do this, and I think that I agree with Jim that we maybe will have some push to get that road fixed, but it is a county road issue, and no one's gonna like some of the things in the plans of how it's gonna get fixed. There are always gonna be people who are not gonna like it, and it's gonna impact their lives just as accidents impact people's lives. And so I think the best we can do is to move forward with the sixteen units and give them that extension, and that's my motion, to give that extension.
Any support?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Further discussion?
I think the concern here is that, you know, we've already approved this Forestville Phase One development. Right now, we're, we're arguing whether the intersection's safe, gonna be safe, will be safe, can't be safe, and I think that, that horse has already left the barn. The only thing we're asking for is a right of Longyear to ask for an extension because of ongoing litigation. And I think that's, that's fair. I think that's, that's unforeseen circumstances. If that litigation would have happened, Longyear may have already had shovels in the ground. And I, I don't think we can turn it, I, I won't turn it down at this point because of that. I, I will grant them their extension. What comes from that, we'll have to see. There's still gonna be people that are upset with the intersection. Hopefully, the intersection will be taken care of. Longyear may be facing financial questions and difficulties and housing situations and markets that are, that are unforeseen right now, but we've already approved it once, and I'm not gonna not approve it now.
Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And just so you know, I don't, I don't think there's one person up here that disagrees with you about the intersection being dangerous. But, you know, it's, it's kind of like, let's try and work something out where it won't be dangerous, and something else satisfy all of you at the same time. So hopefully we can get a light on that. Hey, six B. Property Maintenance Blight Reduction Discussion with Township Legal Council.
Well, as requested at, I'm not sure if it was the most recent meeting or at a recent previous meeting, requested that Township Council be present to answer questions regarding property maintenance. So Roger Zappa is here tonight to do so. Included in your packet tonight, some explanation is due here. Included in your packet is a old draft of the newly proposed blight ordinance. I provided you right before the meeting with an updated draft that includes a section regarding junk vehicles, a little line item about tall grass and weeds, and updates on duties and powers of the code official, as well as, let's see, notices and orders. That new draft, including those sections, really kind of rounds it out and completes it. So that's included for your consideration, as well as Steve requested that the existing property maintenance ordinance be included as well, and that's, was left at your, at your spot tonight as well. So unless you have any questions of me, I will turn it over to commissioners to ask questions or bring up any discussion topics they wish, and Roger is here to address those, and myself as well, so.
Okay, I'm sure Steve has.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. I've got a couple of questions for you. So we're under, we're operating under the B. O. K. thing?
Correct, yep.
There was, I, I thought I've seen other ordinances that we, that were superseded, that kind of stuff, that indicated, you know, fines of up to five hundred dollars a day. What happened to that? That was, there was one that was current that were, that was already on the books.
But it still is on the books.
And where is that one?
Not in your package tonight, but I.
Okay, that's one, that's one, that's one I had asked for. Yeah, go ahead.
I can probably answer that one.
Can I just interrupt for a minute?
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
If anyone here has a child that's kind of been looking in the window back there, or somebody needs to see what he knew, but.
He's great. He's, he's so entertained.
Just looks like he needed something. All right, go ahead, Roger.
I have been suggesting that the township update its Maintenance Code ordinance for about fifteen years. It's based, your current ordinance, the basic portion of it is what you have, and that's an adoption of the nineteen ninety-six B. O. K. Code. The B. O. K. Code has essentially been superseded by the International Property Maintenance Code, and that happened plus or minus fifteen years ago. And it doesn't make this invalid, but it's become very dated and obsolete to some extent. And there's a part B. to this that you don't have, but which I do, and I don't have extra copies. And what was done in nineteen ninety-seven, when this ordinance was adopted, when the B. O. K. Code was incorporated by reference basically, is the Township Board, and that was under a township manager at that time who didn't consult very much with the Township Attorney, but they adopted an ordinance that created exceptions to the B. O. K. Code that's being adopted. So the B. O. K. Code is silent on, is it a civil infraction? What are the fines or the penalties? Those exceptions were added on in an ordinance, um, hang on here. I can give you the ordinance number at least. Oh, seven, oh, one, ninety-seven, which of course in Marquette Township parlance means it was adopted on July one of nineteen ninety-seven. That's the one I think.
That's current right now. Is that correct?
Yes, but you have to read the two of them together.
Yeah.
Which is part of the other issue.
Yeah.
Is it's a very cumbersome type of, of thing to have. is it's a very cumbersome type of, of thing to have, two different, one ordinance under two pieces of paper, if you will, and relying on and incorporating by reference a 1996 BOKA code. And granted, it does say that we're, we're incorporating all of the future amendments that might come to pass and so forth, but you still don't have a document that incorporates all of those. So to find out exactly what your ordinance allows or prohibits is kind of a task. Now, the question you had, I didn't forget to respond on your, your fines and penalties, that's in those exceptions, if you will, or part B of the ordinance. Having said this, I mean, I have been doing this forty years. Every ordinance almost that any municipality adopts will have a provision that says every day that this violation occurs is a new offense. And the attorney goes in and makes that pitch to the judge, and the judge almost universally shoots that down. I have one in a different township right now where that's the issue. We're waiting for a decision from the court on it, but it's a, it's a blight type of complaint. And, you know, we can argue that it's been there for a year, and therefore it's, in that scenario, I think it's $250 is the maximum fine, so three sixty-five times two fifty. I can safely say that in all of my years of practice, I have never seen a local judge implement a penalty or a fine like that. Might they enhance it a little bit by saying, well, you know, you were warned on this occasion, and so we're issuing, we're doubling it, or something to that effect? Occasionally, yes. So I'm not suggesting that we take that language out of the proposed ordinance, but enforcement of it is not a practical reality.
Well, you know, and, you know, I, I have a kind of a personal investment in this, but my question for you is, and just, just from a pragmatic point of view, you know, I pay my taxes, I keep my property in tip-top shape, you know, it's, it's my equity, it's my, my retirement, you know, in, in case I need, I want to have a good equity in my home. And I have a junkyard next door to that, and from what I can see, what I can see, and from my own personal point of view is that the person that is violating this and has a, 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 a serious blight thing gets bent over backwards versus me. I lose equity, I have nowhere to turn. Can I sue the township? Because the township can't do anything about it? I mean, what, what can be done? What, what could the township do to a person like that to make them do it? From a practice point of view, I can see that, yeah, it's going to charge, we're going to charge you 500 bucks a day, every day, and they go, go ahead. What, are you going to squeeze it out of me? Do you put on their taxes? Do you take the property from them? I mean, what, what, what is a good enforcement item that will get somebody off the stick?
Just in general, Marquette Township is pretty fortunate. Now, I know there are a couple of pretty egregious ones around the township, but by and large, compared to many other townships, Marquette Township has been very fortunate in having very few problems. Over the years, I would venture to say that about ninety-plus percent get addressed by a letter from the zoning administrator, or the township planner, or the code enforcement officer, by someone from the township. And then, maybe I'm overstating that percentage, eighty percent get corrected with that letter by having it pointed out within a limited timeframe. If that doesn't happen, typically, the next step is the township attorney says, sends a letter indicating, I've been requested by Marquette Township to inform you that you are potentially in violation of ordinance whatever, a section, fill in the blank here, and you have, unless we see substantial progress within fourteen days, then I've been authorized to have civil infractions citation, a civil infraction citation issued. That's probably the additional ten percent that gets us to about ninety or a little bit better. They get corrected at that phase, or at least dramatically improved at that phase. I know well the property that you're talking about, and that's been an ongoing thing. The ones that are the exceptions, very frequently, and I'm not singling out this property owner, but very, very often, those persons have some type of mental health issue, and just impressing upon them the importance of cleaning up and bringing the property into compliance that would normally ring a bell for the average person, isn't ringing any bells for those particular individuals. In this case, a citation has been issued, there is a hearing on September 10th. As of right now, that's, that's when it's supposed to be anyway, and the court will then hear the proofs. I will be there, the code enforcement officer who is sitting next to me will be there to provide testimony and introduce evidence. The next step is the court will, the court hears that and makes a decision, will typically give a period of days, and the days had better be fairly short, because the construction season and the cleanup season is coming to an end here, maybe sooner than any of us care to think. Then if they don't, it's at that point, we've got a couple of options. In many of these instances, the township demands or requests, you don't get too demanding with the judge, but you request the judge to put in a provision that we have the option, at least, of going in and cleaning up. That's not always a very attractive option for the township to undertake. Another option that's available typically is the property owner can be held in contempt of court if they violate the order, and there's civil contempt, and there's criminal contempt. And criminal, civil contempt means basically fines or other remedies. Criminal contempt can actually involve jail time. I've only seen one of those where the person still refused to clean it up and wound up in jail, but it happens periodically. The, the cleanup by the township gets especially dicey when there are vehicles, cars titled things, because then we have to go through the abandoned vehicle procedure, that like the state police would do, if there's a car left on the highway for a week, and you see the orange sticker on the windshield or the window, that procedure has to be followed and so forth, and it's, and there's a period of time when they can be reclaimed, and it doesn't work terribly well, is, is to put it in a short version to follow that procedure. But those are the options, we can't just go in and clean it up without, just because it's been there. We sent the letter and they didn't do it because, well, the Fourteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution says that people have a right to not be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. So if they don't respond voluntarily, the due process of law is the court system.
So let me ask you this, in this, in this instance, there may be more than one owner to this property.
There are.
Why aren't the other property owners not held as far as liable for that as the, the person that may have put that stuff there? They all share that property. Why, why, why are, why are they dismissed out of hand? Why, why can't they be leaned on?
They can, they were last time, and that, and here we are again.
No, it was two years ago, and it's worse now. So what, what, what is the recourse? What can I, what can I do? The John Q. Public, what can I do?
If you like, you can come to the hearing on September 10th, and it provides some brief testimony in terms of, I live in the area, and it's really, these photos don't even really show half the picture, that this is...
And I got to live next to this guy.
Yeah, so, so impressing upon the judge, so that he realizes that there's another person who votes out there that's disgruntled with how the system is working. So that's, that's a possibility.
This is just something that's, you know, in, in isolation all by itself, that doesn't impact anybody. I mean, there's, I mean, it's, it's on an inland lake. I mean, you know, it's, there's, I mean, why isn't Eagle involved in something like this? I mean, there's, there's, there's got to be something that can be done. I mean, you know, these ordinances are all well and good, but if you, if nothing can be done about it... No, because your ordinance says that we have to protect the property values of adjoining people. How is that being done if nothing can be done? How am I being protected? How am I, how, as John Q. Public, how, how my, is my, my value of my property not being impacted severely by this, and in turn, my, my happiness? Why, why, why do I have to just, okay, I guess that's the way it's going to be?
Well, at this point, the judge is going to hear the evidence, look at the photos, probably won't be making a site visit, but we've got a bunch of photos that show what the conditions are. The question about why isn't Eagle involved, that's an excellent question. Whenever there's a possibility of contamination, that is an outstanding remedy, because they can, they have remedies available that a municipal entity, like a township, or a city, or a village, don't have in their arsenal. So we've got one other one, I believe that the zoning administrator, who isn't here tonight, had indicated to me that the state is involved, because there are some questionably toxic things on the property.
You know, there's, there's at least, you know, ten vehicles out there that could be dripping antifreeze, you know, coolant, engine oil, fuel, who knows what? And it's just like, holy moly, I mean, not only that, you know, our drinking water supply, we're on the same aquifer? I mean, you know, it's, it's...
Yeah, my understanding is that Eagle declined to get involved in this one, but, but is looking into the other one, and quite frankly, I don't know the extent to which they are looking into the other one, but that's my most recent update. Eagle, just like any other employer or municipal entity, is working with, being understaffed, and has only so many things they can address, so they pick and choose. I don't have any control over which ones they pick and choose. So in this case, we issued a, I, I have to authorize citations in certain types of civil infraction cases. The, there's a provision under the Michigan Revised Judicature Act that says that the township attorney or the prosecuting official, which is, that's me, has to authorize citations. I did authorize this citation. Unfortunately, the wheels of justice turn kind of slowly. It goes back to that same question I had, this is in district court, not circuit court, but you probably heard me say earlier tonight that the court system in Marquette is fairly backed up. And that's not unique to, that's not to cast an aspersion on Marquette, that's true just about everywhere. So is it moving as quickly as you or I would love to see it happen? It is not, and furthermore, I can't even guarantee you what's going to happen on September, I'm pretty sure it's the 10th.
Well, you know, I can guarantee you what I'll be looking at next summer. I can guarantee you what I'll be looking at next summer.
Well, if, if we can get an order ordering him, him to clean it up,
Which happened once already.
Which, which is the objective, well, yeah, and, and it did get partially cleaned up.
And stuff just came back.
And it, exactly, and that's, therein lies the problem. If you collect pieces of garage doors, I mean, how, how do you remedy that? And how do you prevent that from, from recurring? Unfortunately, this might be something that we have to keep on addressing. You'd also raise the question about, why didn't we, the, the issue of there's multiple property owners.
Yes.
We pursued that angle last time, and in fact, more often than not, about ninety-nine point nine eight percent of the time, that is the result, because otherwise, one property owner says, you know, I don't know anything about it, I, I don't, I live in Oklahoma, or whatever, and then that's not the case here. There are reasons not to hear, and I can't, I don't want to share what that is right now, but there are some very distinct reasons, there were, there was a lot of legal analysis went into that question.
Just move in a different direction since I have you here, I don't mind asking questions. There's also a cottage on the property that's owned by one of the property owners in this too. He owns the vast majority of the rest of the lake, he bought some properties up and came along. His, one of his cottages is collapsing, literally, the roof is collapsing, it's, it's collapsing on itself. Why can't the township do something about that? That's, that's an ablate ordinance, it's not habitable, it's not safe. Why, what, the township says, you better tear it down or clean that up? And you said, I don't feel like doing that, then what?
Then we get to the next step of, that has not been specifically brought to me, so I have not been...
I understand that, but the township is aware of it.
I haven't been asked to follow up with that, but the next step, and there's nothing carved in stone that we have to go through every step of, well, you have to have a letter from the township attorney. That's pretty effective sometimes, in this case, I don't know that it would be. I think that might be like water off a duck's back. But then, that's the type of scenario where I would be asked to review the circumstances, look at photos, and issue a citation, authorize issuance of a citation.
Township has photos of that already.
That would be the next, that would arguably be the next step. And then, of course, the citation has to be served by, typically, these can be volatile situations, so it gets, we bring our Marquette Township deputy along to serve the citation, and then they have X number of days to respond, and they've got three options. They can, they can plead responsible, they can plead not responsible, or responsible with an explanation. What we want to avoid is having them plead responsible, running to the courthouse and pleading responsible, and paying a $200 fine, or whatever the amount that the court assesses is, because that's also an exercise in futility, where has that gotten us? The junk is still there, the mess is still there. So what we need to do is demand, in those types of cases, a formal hearing. That is what's happening next, in a week and a half, in this case, because otherwise, that happened in a case for Marquette Township a while back, where the citation was issued, and by the end of the day, I think it was either the next day, the same day or the next day, the guy runs down to the courthouse and pays a fine? Citation's dismissed, because he said, yep, I'm guilty, I'm responsible, so no remedy. The remedy comes in by saying, we are entitled, and this comes from your ordinance language, and that's in the old ordinance also, that if it constitutes a nuisance, or it constitutes a violation of any provision of the ordinance, that we have the right to demand abatement, a legal term for cleanup, basically, to correct the situation. If they just pay a fine, we lose that opportunity, so we've got to get in there, and in this case, we are certain to get in there as soon as that ticket was issued and demanded a formal hearing, because that's when it gets decided what, what the remedy is. What timeline is there going to be for cleaning it up, that type of thing? That's, and is it, is it a perfect solution? No, far from it. And that's why I have recommended over the years that if there is another agency, another option, and depending on the circumstances, is the health department. The county health department has certain powers and authorities if it's creating an imminent threat to the health, safety, and welfare, largely the health. And that includes, where I've seen that come into play more is where you've got, the residents refuse to get rid of the garbage. And it's, it's rotting garbage, you've got rats and vermin and whatnot coming, and a disease potential there. It's got to be pretty bad for the health department to take action, same scenario. They're dealing with all kinds of issues too, and they've only got so much manpower. But that's an option in some instances, and I have seen that occur, where the health department will come in, and this is not the correct term, but the condemn in quotations, to, to basically say, this is, this is not... to basically say, this is, this is not a residence that's fit for habitation because of the disease or the, it's placing children in jeopardy, that type of thing. That's an option, and it's, if, if that applies and you can convince the health department, that's a much quicker and more effective option as well. You know, garage door parts, while highly unattractive, don't cause much disease. So that's, you know, again, they're not likely to, to jump in on that one.
If, if the, does the township have the right to condemn the property on there?
That's a term that we wanna steer clear of using because it has a very specific, it's got, it's got a commonly understood meaning among the public, but it has a very specific legal meaning. The township can condemn, can exercise condemnation powers if it needs properties for a public purpose. That wouldn't apply here, we're not looking at building a park on Lake Enchantment. And we have powers to condemn for other reasons as well. Condemnation is a term that's not really properly used in this setting. What we do have the power to do is get an order saying you've got 21 days, whatever, to clean up your mess. And if you don't, then we want the right to come in and, and do it ourselves and hopefully charge that expense and add it on your tax bill. That's, there are complications that can arise in that approach, and I'll just leave it at that. But that's another remedy. The, the other remedy, of course, is the contempt of court that we've already talked about. If he, if the property owner does not comply within a specified period of time, then he's in contempt of court. And the court, and that requires another court hearing. But what, what can happen in an extreme case, and if the judge gets angry enough that the, that the person, the property owner, is affecting innocent other property owners and is flaunting the court's orders, they can issue a warrant for his or her arrest and have him brought in and, and show cause. The, the next step after that is, the property owner would have to show cause why he should not be held in contempt of court. He wouldn't just automatically be found, there would be another hearing, and that gets us back to the 14th Amendment of the Constitution because that's, instead of a deprivation of property, that's more a deprivation of, you know, liberty. So he's gotta have a life liberty in property, he's gotta have the due process, and that's the judicial system. It's all checks and balances. So we can't just go in there and bulldoze his, you know, condemn in that sense, bulldoze his house over. But if the blight ordinance is in, if he's in violation, if it's, if, you know, doesn't have proper windows, doors, doesn't have, you know, the cave-in situation that we were talking about that is uninhabitable, well, there are other provisions, especially if you adopt a new ordinance and improve upon, give a new and improved version of your old ordinance, then that would make it easier. Long answer to a short question, maybe.
So we're really waiting for the hearing?
But it's soon.
Very soon.
Do you know anything more about, since we have someone that's interested about 550, 550, with the Eagle situation with that property?
I don't. The zoning administrator is the one that informed me that Eagle was interested in pursuing that a little further. And I have been run a little bit thin, including having had COVID two weeks ago, and everybody else in my office had COVID, so then I was covering for all the other people. So I haven't gotten an update. And I am writing myself a note right now, tomorrow, to follow up on that, because I don't know, is the short answer. But that was my understanding, is that was one of the properties that Eagle, that it was sufficiently dire, that Eagle was concerned about what's in some of those containers and, and other circumstances involving that property. And I just don't have those details.
Do you know if Eagle denies a property like that one, can you resubmit, like after a certain term or time? Like, and see if they would take the case later?
It, it depends, short answer, yes. What are those timelines? I don't, in my practice, deal with Eagle very often, but yes, you can. And sometimes it's not even so much a formal application process, it's just the squeaky wheel gets the grease type of scenario, more than it is that you have to fill out Form 37 B19 or something to get action. Sometimes it's just a matter of pursuing and getting a hold of the right person and impressing upon them that we've got a bad situation here.
I know that's, we definitely have the answers here, but we just have to wait and see what happens with that.
Do we have a time for that court date?
We do, but I don't have it with me. I'm still not, I'm still checking on what time the things I'm doing tomorrow are.
I understand.
But we definitely have that. I will get that to, to the planning commission chair and to, Eric knows this, has it already. I will get it to Jason, Jason has it also. I will circulate it so everybody can get it. In fact, I guess I can circulate it to the planning commission. I have all of your emails available if you wish, and I can do that tomorrow. Okay, well, Eric has agreed to take that off my plate, but there is a time, but I don't remember what it is. There's also, of course, a possibility that the property owner may not show. And then I, you know, we will make our arguments on what should happen, but that's what I was referring to in terms of, I don't know what the judge will do. Will the judge give him another bite at the apple or not? It'll depend on, on a number of factors, including what kind of mood the judge is in.
Is there anything that you've seen in the blight ordinance that you can recommend that we should put in there, change, delete?
Well, I came in just 10 minutes early because I hadn't seen this until just a couple days ago. And I said, well, my goodness, you need to incorporate things in there about junked cars, auto parts and so forth. And that's why you got the new version handed out is administratively, an old version got inserted into the planning commission packet. So there is such a thing. I guess I would like to take a slightly closer look at this yet, but generally, I think this is a, this is an improvement with the understanding that if you repeal the old property maintenance code, then you won't have that property maintenance code. And that is much broader in terms of what it purports to enforce. But a lot of the things in, in there are more county issues. When you get into the building codes and the, you know, electrical and plumbing inspections and so forth. I don't know that you're losing anything really that the township wants or should be enforcing by repealing that. That's one of the things, though, I guess, that I'd like to just look at and give a little bit more thought. And by that, I don't mean weeks, I mean 48 hours-ish to, to look at. The, most of the provisions that are in your proposed ordinance that was just handed out are pretty standard types of things. No two are alike, well, no two are exactly alike. This one looks remarkably similar to another township I'm familiar with, because I know where it came from. But I don't have any major red flags, especially considering that you've now got a provision for junk cars, auto parts, that type of thing. Because that was conspicuously missing from that other version.
So we just got it too. So I, I feel like I need some time to look at it because on my notes, on the original one that we received, I did put motor vehicles, cars, trailers, so it's not just cars with four wheels. It's these people that have 12 trailers in their yards with no license plates. It is, I don't know how you identified those, people with no license on them. You know, maybe it all fits into the new one, but I did write that, and I'm guessing my colleague Sear also had some comments about vehicles.
Well, and one other thing to think about that I, that I didn't look at it with that much scrutiny is there will frequently be exceptions, and there is an exception in your current property maintenance code for vehicles under restoration, for example, that you can have. Or if you've got a vehicle that's legitimately, I got a new truck and I'm selling my old truck and I've got an old one for sale, that you can have it there for X number of days, even if it doesn't have a license plate on it because I transferred my plate from my old car to my new car or whatever. We could take a look, many times, the ordinance will have little exceptions like that. Not that you can have 12 cars on your lot, but that talks about, and if you're gonna have, you know, a trailer that it'll be stored not in the front yard, type of scenario, that you can have up to one. And that, keeping in mind that attorneys can have a tendency to just keep adding and adding things, and all of a sudden, you've got a, you know, a 20-page ordinance, you don't need that. But those are issues or things that you could talk about at least, as far as do we need to have? Were those exceptions that we had in the existing ordinance, ones that we wanna continue to have in this new proposed ordinance, because I don't think they're in there? So, and you don't, they don't have to be, but it's a topic of discussion whether or not you wanna enact those or other exceptions.
So I'll ask my other question. So where's the process for how all this happens? Because I hear all the time, so they get, how many days till they get this ticket? First, we get a letter, and if they don't do what they're supposed to, in how many days, then they get something else. But I, I never can see a process. Step one, two, three, four, five?
In our, I think July 10th meeting or thereabouts, the first planning commission meeting in July, we had an extensive conversation, similar agenda, I had to kind of open any conversation about property maintenance. And that was when I shared the existing ordinance, this new proposed ordinance, that one shooter that had the process. So that information has been provided. Not to confuse everybody any further, but the one, the draft ordinance I handed out right before the meeting, the new proposed draft ordinance, that was the version that was included in that July 10 packet. So I'm not sure what happened with this packet where we included an old draft of it. But the, the one that you got right before the meeting tonight was the one that was in that July 10 packet, including the junk vehicle section and the weeds and everything like that.
So was there a page for the process?
Yep.
And so that's not included in this?
Not included tonight, but it was in the July 10 meeting packet.
And that typically would not be a part of the ordinance.
Correct, just so that.
That's just a checklist, if personnel change, for example, so, oh, we've got to identify who the property owners are, we've got to, you know, give, and the number of days even on your checklist is going to be contingent on what the problem is. On the one hand, the worse the problem is, the quicker you want it cleaned up. On the other hand, it's a lot easier to roll two tires away that are in the front yard than it is 12 cars. So you have to have some kind of a reasonable balance there of how long you give them.
But that's what people ask me.
So, so there is, there has to be some common sense discretion, if you will. And it doesn't, very often, it doesn't get to me because the letter from the zoning administrator or the township planner solves it. So I never even know about many of these. More than many, the vast majority of them, I never cross my desk. And that's a good thing.
Yeah, we're thankful for that.
Because Marquette Township, as bad as it is to have some blighted properties that are, that are really standing out, Marquette Township has a lot less of them than some other places. It's been fairly effective in, in cleaning up things as they arise. Are there ones that have been there for a long time and that are seemingly getting worse? Yes, but by and large, Marquette Township has done a really good job on its procedures of following through on these. So it's all the more exasperating on the ones in which that hasn't worked.
Do you think that that's maybe due to the fact that we have a six-foot-ten coenforcement official?
It worked pretty well, even when you had about a five-foot-eight coenforcement official several years ago, so.
Are there any, Roger, are there any more powers or remedies that a city or a village has than a township has to correct blighted situation?
Not specifically. I mean, every municipality, including every township, can enact its own ordinance. For example, not every ordinance has a weed provision in it. And, you know, there's the question of, does the township want to be the weed police or not? So every municipality can react if they have particular problems in their community by putting a specific provision in that addresses what those are. But in terms of, you know, townships are, well, Marquette Township is a charter township, acts under the Charter Township Act. Most of your neighboring townships, all of the other townships in Marquette County, except for Chocolat Township, are general law townships, they operate under a different statute. Villages operate under yet a different statute. Cities, there are home rule cities and class four cities and so forth, and they operate under different statutes. But by and large, those statutes are pretty consistent on this type of thing. They have some other significant differences between them, but on enforcement of nuisance-type blight property maintenance things, not a lot of differences.
Well, grilled them long enough. Anything else from anybody?
Yeah, I'd like to say something, I just hope nobody else has to go through this.
Yeah, same.
You know, it's really been a pain in the ass, it's heartbreaking. My wife's family's been out there for 75 years, and it's just, it breaks her heart. You know, and, you know, I, I feel helpless, you know.
It is, it is very bad. I went out there and I saw, and it's, it's worse than what you see in the pictures. It's unbelievable.
And I would agree that it probably does hurt your property values. If you were to put up a sale sign and somebody drove there and says, do I want to live next to that guy? I don't know, no matter if they fall in love with your house or not, they might say, nah.
Yeah, so, and like, and like I said, I, you know, I have no recourse. I have no recourse, I, I have to deal with it. Hope that, you know, Roger's, you know, persuasion of the judge, you know, gets something to happen, but you have the landowner or landowners involved, and there's, there's other issues out there too. Like I said, the one, a different landowner has a cottage that is collapsing. It's, it's collapsing, it's collapsing. Nothing's been, you know, gonna be done with it, he won't repair it, he won't redo it. So it's just like, you know, my hands are tied. Financially, you know, I'm, I'm gonna suffer because of it, and there's nothing that's gonna happen, so.
Oh, you never know.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm getting older.
Okay, well, I guess we're going to wait till the next meeting and get the next copy to make sure everything looks good. We'll look, I don't feel be any revisions or not.
There could be, I mean, I would encourage you to read it over again and send me any, I will follow up in an email with everybody with a few of those items that we talked about, including sending the exception sheet like Roger was talking about, hey, I have to read the old one with that exception sheet to make sense of it. I will send that along as well as the court date and time, and just one other thing, what was it? Oh, the process one sheeter, I will send that along again as well, just to kind of round out the conversation.
Okay. Number seven, unfinished business, none at this time. Any correspondence, Eric? All right, Linda's here for the Township Board Report.
Oh, the Township Board Report had a wonderful presentation by our senior services director, so I would encourage you to listen to that. And other than that, I think we had a nice short meeting, actually. So we paid all our bills and thanked, did add a fire person. So we have people that come and go and the fire department is very busy. So, yeah, any questions? You guys are still getting the minutes, right?
Uh, no.
No, you're not getting the minutes from the Township Board?
We didn't get any in this packet unless there weren't any meetings by anybody.
You don't get them in the packet, you get them emailed. Do you not get them emailed?
Not in the packet.
They're not in the packet.
Oh, okay.
You don't want that packets really long.
You seem to email them.
I have, yes.
You don't?
I can't remember if I saw this last one, but I saw.
I'll just remind, I think Randy Tari does that, so I'll remind him.
Rock Committee Report?
Nothing to report.
Rock Committee Report?
Nothing to report, decides we meet on Tuesday next week.
Zoni Report?
Nothing substantial, I will talk a little bit about the master plan update, the survey is live, we do have some paper copies available at the front desk here, as well as those bookmarks with the QR code are now going around. Tried it up today, the QR code takes you right to the township website or the township page on the website regarding the master plan. And Lori Miller with SEH, we've been talking with her, she, they, SEH and we staff are in need of a steering committee formed or composed of members of the Planning Commission, we are looking for three, three volunteers basically. Denny did say he would be interested, so really I'm looking for two tonight. So hopefully we have two people who would want to volunteer. Lori, let's see, did say that the first steering committee meeting, no dates are set yet, would review public involvement to date, review the community demographic section and then identify and go over the identification of goals and objectives for the natural resources and community services section. So really just kind of going through the existing master plan, section by section, and kind of identifying those areas that need to be addressed, changed, kind of the same conversations we've been talking about. So I would be looking for two volunteers for a master plan update steering committee.
Specifically for the Planning Commission?
Yep.
Does the board, does the Township Board have someone on that committee?
As far as I know right now, I don't think we have anybody identified, no. And I'm not entirely sure at the makeup, Jason's been largely talking with Lori, so I'm not entirely sure of the makeup that they're looking for as far as a board member, three planning commissioners, a few citizens, things like that. But I would assume that it's pretty diverse.
So if we have three planning commission members, does that going to be quorum for the planning commission then?
You're saying like a quorum in those steering committee meetings or?
Well, if they have three planning commissions together, that's going to be a quorum for the planning commission.
Right, I don't think it would be decision making on behalf of the planning commission at these steering committee meetings, it would be strictly.
Wouldn't be a problem.
I would think that you would still want to notice it as a public meeting, to play that one safe. If you've got a quorum from the Planning Commission present, just so it doesn't migrate into areas of discussion that are decision making or could even be construed as deliberating toward the making of a decision, I believe that's the language in the Open Meetings Act. So I would think it would be advisable to notice it as a, as a public meeting. And that doesn't necessarily mean that anybody's going to come, but at least if they want to, the transparency is there and the statute's been complied with.
Are there going to be scheduled meetings on certain dates, Eric?
Obviously would be scheduled, I'm not sure if there's a first Wednesday of every, you know what I mean, I'm not sure if they have a set schedule like that yet.
Month, month, twice a month, or?
I, no.
All month, again?
Okay. Like I said, Denny already expressed interest, so.
Just depending on the dates and times, I can try to judge.
Awesome.
Are we going to be involved or have anything to do with that? I saw a public hearing for the abandonment of the road venture.
I have no idea, I haven't heard anything about that.
I have not either.
Where did you see that?
I'm correct, right, I'm not?
Yes, the Veterans Home is asking the Road Commission to abandon from the-
Cornerstone?
No.
Oh, sorry.
Well, it'd be from like, there's an empty lot behind the fire department, and that belongs to the church, North Iron Church, so behind that, where the woods start for the road part.
Gotcha, okay.
And they've made a request of the state, because they own the road, it's quite a process, I guess. They had to do a bunch of paperwork, so they would only abandon from the tree line down because they did a survey and found that 600 cars a day go down that road. So the state was concerned that to have that shut off would be pretty important. So the Road Commission is recommending a bypass, they like bypasses, to go around and be down on the south side. They've got two different ways that they can kind of come around and loop back to Wright Street again. So the idea with the facility is you would turn down past Heidi Johnson's and the fire department, go down to where the tree line starts, and that would be their expanse of their building. It would go north to south. So you'd like, I'm guessing maybe, I've seen the plan, but I don't remember if it's got a circle or not, like in front of the door. So they would just abandon from that edge of the woods to Wright Street and then try to reroute it around to the south.
Road abandonment, a court, road abandements are a court decision, aren't they, or a court order or something? Is it a subdivision road being, have to be abandoned by a court?
Is that a plat over there? I'm not even certain. If it's a plat amendment, absolutely.
I thought it might be, it's some sort of development because it's platted lots, I don't know who did the development, but I can't imagine, it's just a meets and bounds kind of a thing.
Trowbridge, as far as I know, is the only platted subdivision. It was the first one in the state, mistake. But I know there's a process the Road Commission has to go through, so they are having a public hearing.
There is, and the township has been involved in that in the past, depending on the circumstances. It's not, if it's a plat and the plat is going to be amended, then yes, there's a circuit court procedure that must be gone through. We did that, in fact, when we abandoned a block long of portion of Erie Avenue between Cherry and Summit Streets for the Lions Park, Lions Field Park over there on, 15 years ago, maybe, I'm just guessing, time flies.
So more to come, I would guess.
The public hearing that the Road Commission is having is Monday, September 30th, 2:00, in Ishraming in their office, first notice, and I'm guessing they'll have the recommendation, they'll probably show a map of how that can come around.
So is the township in favor of this? Should the township be in favor of this?
We haven't been involved or asked, or, this is, it's their road. And that's what some people keep forgetting.
We saw a public hearing that got input on it, I guess, to see.
Yes. The Road Commission's in charge of fixing the roads, grouping them, developing them, you know. You have to get the funding, even if we wanted to get involved, they have to do it.
Anything more, my name's Zoni, Eric?
Yep, unless there are specific questions, I have nothing else.
Okay. Any announcements?
There is, there is a meeting, is it October 6th, MTA? Is that the MTA meeting, October 6th? Did you?
Oh, yeah, let me look.
You should have a flyer.
What's he talking about?
So it's the October 6th?
Third.
October 3rd?
The Thursday.
The third, Lynn?
It's at 8:30.
Well, if you're interested in attending, you should contact Lynn.
Cam.
Cam.
Yeah.
Even if you just are able to go for the morning half, there are lots of great updates and good information, so we do have education dollars team.
I don't see any date or anything on this. Just look up who we're talking about.
No, not that, yeah. I will, I'll find it.
Okay.
And send it.
Any more public comment?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my name's Betsy Little, I live on Eagles Nest. I have one question. So as a citizen of the township, when we see a property with junked cars, because a lot of the ones I'm thinking of that I see are junked cars, then where do we start that process as a citizen? With you?
Call the township, yep.
Call the township, okay. And then I guess, just a thought, you know, in listening to the conversation tonight is that, you know, we are the township and these blighted properties really make the township look ineffectual and gross, you know? I feel like, yeah, we've got them and I see that the process is really cumbersome, but it really reflects on all of us. You know, who wants to live in a township with properties that sound like the one you're describing and certainly the one that I think is the worst on the Big Bay Road? It really makes me sad, you know? Thanks.
Hopefully we can try and fix it a little bit with this door and so. Anyone else? Okay. Additional comments by commissioners?
I just want to thank Roger for coming in, go through the legalese and the reality of the situation for us.
Well, my pleasure to be here, and I don't pretend to have all the answers on these things, but as issues come up, funnel them through the channels and see that they get to me, I'll try to provide what I can in the way of guidance.
Bethany?
Yeah? I really encourage you, if you have not filled out the township survey for the master plan, that you pick up one of these tonight and you fill it out. It's not, you know, we're not saying that only township residents can fill it out. What I've been telling people is you're our partners, you live next door to us, fill out the survey, and the people getting that information will know because you'll answer that question that you're not a resident. So fill it out, everyone, fill it out. There are those little bookmarks at the corner store on Ontario's Avenue.
All right, and I'd like to thank Roger also as being lightning, appreciate all the info. I guess with that, we're adjourned.